This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, everybody. The March 10th, 2021 Planning Commission Work Session. And I guess I'm gonna call roll. I am Chloe Beckett. I am here. Tim Burns. Blake Hoskins.
Here.
Dow Ryan.
Here.
Ashley Regal. Ashley, are you there?
Here, sorry.
Boo Soulsby.
Here.
And Darby Valley.
I am here.
Great. And Eric, I guess we're looking at SDR 2-21?
Yes. So, good evening, everybody. SDR 2-21 is probably one of the biggest multifamily projects we've had coming into Cottage Grove. It's an 80-unit development on a 3.41-acre site just south of the old Harrison School on South 10th Street. As far as concurrent applications go, there was, the property owner, if you will, has an approved partition application, so they will be separating this lower 645 feet off from the school property, or former school property now owned by Lynn Blackstone. There are 10 buildings on the site that have the multifamily dwellings in them. Some of the units are four units, some of them are eight, et cetera. There's a mix of one-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, one-bath, and two-bedroom, two-bath units, two-story with units on each floor, so it's not like internal stairs, I guess, if you will, within the same unit, right? So an upper floor and a lower floor. The majority, about, I don't know, 95% of the parking is gonna have carports on it, so it'll be covered parking. They do have enough parking spaces onsite per code at one per one-bedroom or 1.5 per two-bedroom. Toting, I believe it's 98 total spaces across the site. Yes, 98. With van-accessible ADA, of course, as well. But of course, also, they're gonna have a ton of frontage on 10th Street, right? They don't need it by code, but they do have all of that frontage there to work with, right? In case there's occupants with multiple vehicles or something like that, right? Or guests, et cetera. All of the buildings along the 10th Street frontage, the front of the parcel, meet design criteria of having a door facing the right-of-way and connected via a path. So, in this case, a five-foot path to connect from the sidewalk to the what is really a back door, but they've adjusted their design in order to have those ground-floor units have a door on the back patio, like I said, connected to the sidewalk. But it's more like a, you know, not a sliding glass door, a hinged door with glass in it. All other criteria are met of articulation, six design features, et cetera. Other buildings within the development not having to meet those criteria of having a street-facing door have just a lower unit with, you know, a slider out to a private patio space. Per code, each apartment is, well, 50% of the upstairs apartments and 50% of the downstairs apartments are required to have private open space, private space of no less than 48 feet. All of the units have, I believe it's 65 square feet, of private patio space, right? So it's their place for barbecues, or, I don't know, reading a book, or, you know, et cetera. And there's also a storage locker integrated into the back patio area, so you'll have, you know, a little setting area, but then a closet, a locked closet, so you can have additional storage. There is gonna be a pool and a clubhouse, so as far as amenities go, that's pretty awesome amenity, with a pool, fence around it. And then the clubhouse will be available for tenants to sign up and, I guess, check out, if you will, so that, you know, if there's a birthday party or something like that, they'll have that kinda there with a little kitchenette included in the clubhouse. As far as fire access, et cetera. If you look at the site plan that's in the packet of emails that I sent y'all, you'll see that they have two proposed entrances and exits. One being in alignment with Tyler Avenue, that's the northern entrance exit. That has kinda like a four-way star-looking thing going to all the different parking areas for that half of the development. The south half of the development is the parking area for the clubhouse, and then, of course, the southernly buildings. But they're shaped in such a way that they meet criteria for fire department turnarounds. So if fire trucks have to go in there, of course, they can make that turn, the large 28-foot radius corners there. All the units, because they're multifamily, have to be sprinkled anyway. But, you know, of course, that's still requires that you be able to get a fire truck in there. There will be a locked gate accessing Pierce Avenue. Pierce Avenue is an undeveloped road, public right-of-way road on the west side of the property towards the south end. There's gonna be just a lock gate there that would be large enough for vehicles to pass through, and there will be what's called a Knox box on that for the fire department to be able to key in. So additional, you know, escape routes, if you will, or entrance/exits in case of emergency. Other than that, you know, they're not asking really for anything specific, any modifications to code. It's pretty much straightforward, clear and objective, meeting all the criteria of a code. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. I have a question. How are they dividing the flatland from the land we wanted to get cleared out? Were these two lots? Was this one lot? Did you guys approve a split?
I said that at the top, so I don't know if you spoke too fast or what, but yes, they have.
I was looking for pictures.
Okay, sorry about that. So, yes, the, if you were standing on the property, say, on the sidewalk on South 10th, at the southernmost boundary, looking north towards the.
I get where it is. I'm asking, how are they able to do this? Was this not sold as one lot? Has this been subdivided? Because when the school district went into it, it was one lot, and it was always projected as being developed as, you know, this big old thing. Now, I'm, from a planning point of view, watching, forgive my French, the shitty school that needed to be torn down is still going to be there as an eyesore, and you're developing the one flat ground that was good, useful fields into housing.
Right. So, yes, the applicant did submit a partition application, and it was approved. So that lower 645 feet of the parcel has been partitioned off. We don't have the option of saying, no, you have to do something with the school still.
What all goes into a partition application?
It's a type-two application, so it's ministerial. That means that it's 100-foot, 100-foot public notice and a two-week public comment period where people can submit in writing or verbally any comments or concerns. I received no comments on that partition application. It did meet all the criteria for lot size, adequate, you know, contact with public right-of-way, et cetera. So really, there was nothing that, you know, by code that we could have done to have a different outcome.
And if people had complained at that point about it, could anything have been done then?
Like, like what you all do, you know, it has to be specific to the criteria. So saying, "The school is ugly, and we thought you were gonna do all of it," is not criteria of a partition.
Okay. My understanding is gonna be a little bit of pushback at the meeting. I'm not certain, but that's just rumors floating, and so just as much information as we can have.
Sure. Yeah, so, and the, there is, at the bottom of the staff report in there, like, page 56, 556, something like that, I do cover that there was a concurrent partition application, and that must be completed prior to occupancy. But it has been approved.
Great. Okay. I think it's great. We need housing. Awesome.
They are also.
I'm not as happy about it.
Sure. You know, like I said again, I mean, there's just nothing in my code that could make me.
No, I get it. I'm not mad at you, Eric. There's obviously a problem here with the process, because I'm an interested neighbor. I'm on that road. I sure as hell didn't see this. I'm the fucking chairman of the Planning Commission. Didn't know it was coming. So here, I'm finding all this complaint we've had about the city, all this work we've done to get housing, and we're gonna piss off half this town, and they're gonna think we're fucked. I'm pissed off. I'm telling you right now, I'm voting no at, as of this moment, I'm voting no. So for those of you who don't show up, and there isn't a quorum, and I keep abstaining or not doing something, better be there if you want this to happen, because this one's pissing me off.
Yeah, so how do, how do we say no?
Well, you have, if you vote no, you have to actually give us specific, concrete criteria that we are, that the staff report is failing in the finding, and you have to give us a new finding. So you can't just, if, I should say, the Planning Commission as a whole votes no, individuals can vote no. But if the commission as a whole votes no, we have to give you different findings, and you'll have to be very clear as far as where our findings were wrong.
And I think my objection here is more to our city process, because this is a process designed to get everybody pissed off.
Well, I guess I'm missing, you know, we sent out.
I get it. I'm not talking criteria. You're right. It's, you're fine. Not arguing you is doing your job and following the damn letters. I'm saying, as a planning commission with some idea of actually trying to project it and get it so people in town know what's going on, we are failing with this one. This was poorly done, and if we need to change our processes, we need to change our processes.
Well, and what we could have done, and we have the option, is doing more than the minimum.
And we did put this in the paper twice.
Dude, I get that. And I'm not saying I have an answer. If I had an answer, I would have told it to you.
Yeah, we actually, yeah.
We're a hard time to reach.
We did actually overpay for ads in the Sentinel on this one. We did it two weeks ago.
Any ads in Sentinel's overpaying, but I hear what you're saying.
So what do the signs look like? Like, so there were signs posted out in front there, in front of the school? And how large are they?
I believe they're 18 by 24, something like that.
Okay.
And then somebody tore them down, so I had to put them back up.
And Darby, you're voting no, just based on some, this principle that we should have.
The signs weren't up long enough. I couldn't read them. As a local resident, I didn't feel informed. I feel the whole process is convoluted and broken.
How long were the signs?
I got a letter. I'm up on Madison. I got a letter, and I had the, I saw it coming. And, you know, Darby, we can hope that if this thing goes through and it's successful, then the same developer will tear down the school and build more.
Yeah, I've lost my hope. I hear what you're saying. I'm not telling you guys what to do. I'm telling you, this has been annoying. So, and I'm just saying, we wanna think through the, in the future, the process, because we're gonna get a lot of feedback on this. I'll be amazed if we don't.
Well, and, yeah.
I sent out 70 letters to folks, and like I said, I got one phone call, one. So I know that maybe you guys are hearing things that I'm not hearing, but.
Perhaps advertising on Facebook, put it on the Beeper Show. Get it to the people who actually make noise, find out about it, and so they can go out around and tell everybody else and bang on drums. I'm just saying, our notification system, I don't think is working. I'm not saying it isn't legally compliant. I'm not saying the staff report isn't perfect. I'm not saying they're not meeting every possible criteria we have and have helped to develop as far as planning and zoning stuff goes. What I'm saying is, the school district sold a school with the idea that the whole thing would get redeveloped, and right now, the only part that anybody in this community wanted is gonna get housing on it, and the eyesore is going to remain, the asbestos hazard is going to remain, and the development issue is gonna remain, and they're gonna make enough money on this, they don't ever have to do anything with that. I'm not saying they won't want to, but basically, what you have done is exactly what killed the logging industry. You had Maxim come in, fucking eviscerate the pension, and they're gonna sell off the trees. You're selling off the sweet spot, and we're not taking care of the cancer. I don't think that is a good planning idea. I think it's horrible.
Well. And it's terrible, too.
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, planning idea, it's not actually ours, but I can say that we do actually have, there are development proposals for the rest of the property. We just can't bring them forward right now, because they're not at that stage.
So someone might wanna get up and start talking about them and tell them how it's coming, and we haven't dropped the ball, and we're not screwing you, because this is gonna be a public relations nightmare.
Yeah, and we've seen several actual proposals, potential for the rest of the property, so.
One thing that I also had a question on was traffic study and the potential for possibly a speed limit lowering on 10th, because people go really fast, and with the influx of more traffic, I feel like, maybe, I don't know if we need it that, but that's my only concern.
So for speed studies and traffic studies like that, so because this is in alignment with the zoning, you know, one was not triggered as far as, you know, vehicle trips per day. It's gotta be something like a 300% increase or something like that. But multifamily is a smaller factor than single-family, so it's a pretty high threshold to make. It would be something that a Walmart or something like that could pull in, where they've got 300, 400 trips a day. Whereas multifamily, it's a factor of 0.6, so 80 times 0.6, you know, you're sitting at 60 trips a day. So there wasn't a traffic study requirement for this. Regarding speed, the speed limits are actually dictated by the state. It would, you know, need to be warranted. That is something that staff, we do from time to time, do studies, put those tubes across the road and get an idea. But then, when you get that data in, it becomes the 75% rule, where, say, every, I believe the speed limit on that road is 25. But say everybody's going, 75% of people are going 30, that would then become the new speed limit, if it was followed through to the end. So, you know, that, that means, they use that 75% rule, it's like, people feel comfortable going this speed. That must be the appropriate speed for the road. So it is something that we could look at, but I just don't know that it would give the effect that you are thinking, Blake.
Right. That being said, council does have, it is a city street, council does have the authority to do things like calming measures, speed bumps and things like that, irrespective of a speed study, if they chose to do that. So that is, that would be a council decision.
Okay, so there's no, there's no, like, recommendation that we would make
We could make a recommendation to council.
Potentially put in speed bumps.
Planning Commission could make a recommendation to council. It wouldn't be binding, but it could be a recommendation.
Okay.
What else, Darby, would make you feel better about this? What else, recommendations do we need to make to city council?
It sounds to me, Darby, like you want to actually possibly take some time to look at our Chapter 4 and our public notice process for all of our types of, and consider how we might actually come into the digital age for public involvement.
I absolutely do.
But that would be a legislative amendment to Chapter 4 of the Development Code. So I'm just saying that that is not something that necessarily can be addressed as part of this application.
No, 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 I get it.
It absolutely is something that we could look at, and the Planning Commission could make a recommendation that staff look at. Yes.
How far down the pipeline this mystical unicorn that's coming behind this development? These plans you've seen but can't speak of?
I don't have a timeline. I can't give you a timeline. I know that, I mean, I have seen conceptual drawings.
What are our options as far as postponing tabling, that sort of thing, if something like this comes before us?
This application is considered needed housing. We have 100 days to process it from the date that the application was deemed complete to the end of appeal. And Eric, you can probably give me a date, what that actually means, but not very much, is what I'm gonna say.
Yeah. And, I mean, still, it would have to be applicable to the criteria, right?
Well, the Planning Commission could put an application on hold without a criteria question, but they can only, you can only put it on hold for, I mean, you can extend the public hearing and request more time to deliberate. But it would, you, we only have so far, because it is a needed housing application. And the state law says we only have 100 days to process that from the beginning to the very end, including potential appeal dates.
So I would like to know what that actual date is, if that means one meeting or two meetings are open as possibilities. I'm not advocating we do that. I've stated what my intentions are so far, but I would like to know what's available to us.
Well, and if there's a lot of public hearing, it would be good to know.
It was deemed complete on February 17th. So.
Okay. So March, April, May 15th, May 14th?
But it has to be able to get in front of the city council, though, too, right?
Understood.
Correct. Right. So typically.
We would potentially be able to kick it one time, and that'd be it.
Maximum, yeah, basically.
So I got a question here. I'm struggling with the conference, because I feel like the concern here is not necessarily with the development. The concern is the fact that the purchaser that purchased the property is not following through with the agreements that were made with the school district, or vice versa, and the school district's not following through with the intent of the property, as they, very similar to previous conversations about building a new high school and what we're gonna do with the old high school site. And I'm struggling with, we're bringing these together, and you're using a process that, I mean, if you have valid reasons that the development doesn't meet the city's criteria, then I can understand that. But I'm sensing that that's not the case. Darby, you were on the Planning Commission when you approved this going from R1 to R2, so you knew what the densities were. You also served on.
No problem with the plan.
And you also served on the committee when we reduced the lot sizes and increased the ability to put more units on the property. So we're struggling with the intent here, the conversation of dragging this out in trying to inflict what? What's happening?
And I don't know. And I'm asking for what my options are, actually, not what I'm going to do. I've stated what I'm planning to do at the moment is simply to vote no. And then she brought up, if the Planning Commission all votes no, there's an issue. But in the past, things I haven't liked, we haven't had quorum, and so I've been convinced to change my votes to let it go. And I regretted it. It was a mistake. Had I known there were no showers in that gym over there in the development, I wouldn't have voted yes, ever. This one, I'm, put my name out there as saying, okay, hey, they're doing this, we need the housing, we're doing it. And now they're doing it in the most politically destructive way. It pisses me off. I might get over it in the next hour or two, but looking at it now and hearing, we're just developing to track the one piece of property in this town I've coveted for the kids of this town, and I'm watching it turn to houses, that pisses me off. So that's where I'm at. I'm not saying I have a logical thing, and I'm not saying any of this is logical. But we have a repeated issue in this town, where we say something's going to happen, even if we are sticking to the particulars, we're not following with the spirit of what gets conveyed. And it leaves people really distrustful, and that's what gets capitals invaded. It's just, it's a bad idea. I'm just saying, the process is breaking down, that you're gonna have a lot of people upset, and we're not getting the word out. So I think that the idea of revisiting how we announce this stuff is definitely a productive way of going forward. I'm not saying, don't do it. I've said, these guys do a good job. I'm sure it meets every criteria. I don't have a leg to stand on. Nonetheless, I don't like it. So I'm looking for what are my options in order to get some consensus and to get the word out that these next development stuff is coming, when right now, my staff is gonna get up there in front of the meeting, can't say anything about it. And since I can't say anything about it, because I haven't seen the pictures, I'm trying to find out, how do we get it out to the public that we didn't screw you, that we are developing the whole thing, we are tearing down the building that should have gotten torn down, in order to promote needed housing? That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I wanna know when that building is gonna come down, too. Because that was part of, that was part of the deal when that property sold.
The deal was that the asbestos would be removed, right? Not that the building would come down.
And, yeah, I sat through the, I sat through the school district meetings, and yes, the majority, if not all, the school district members, school board members, were adamant that that building needed to come down. They sold a piece of property to the current owner, and they must not have put, placed in the agreement for the sale that that was a criteria or a piece of it. And that's not the city's fault.
No, we're not saying it is. I'm saying we have a process issue that's gonna keep pissing our citizens off and give them no faith in us. That's the problem.
But is it, is it a city process problem, Darby, or is it a process problem with the school district?
I think the notification, I mean, I look at ways to skirt rules all the time, or how to follow a rule and get what you want, even though, you know, if you're fully upfront. It's just, I like to look at how things work. And this looks like they took a deal, they split up the lot, because they knew they could, and now they're developing that. And maybe that's for cash flow, maybe there are good and valid reasons. What I'm saying is, as a citizen looking here, who is intimately familiar with how the school board is going and what's going on down there, and knows people who made those decisions and was talking with them as they were going through all this, what I'm looking at is a bait and switch. I'm just trying to look at it from the outside. So I'm not saying you guys have done anything wrong. I'm saying there's something wrong with our process, that this keeps going through to where people are gonna get pissed off. And I might be wrong. Maybe it's just me, but I will find out next week.
It's not just you. It's not just you. We've heard it a lot.
One thing I wanna know is, even if we get public notice out, and everyone knows, and everyone objects, I feel like we're gonna have a lot of people objecting next week anyways, but what can they do? What can the public actually do if they rally together, try to petition this? Do they have any power as a public to oppose this?
It's again, based on the criteria. They're gonna have to focus on the criteria, the same as you would.
The issue, Blake, would have been, if they first announced the split, if we would have had notice when they announced the split, and they protested and brought the split up to us, maybe then we would have had some grounds to not allow them to subdivide the property, to develop it separately. And maybe not then either, because I don't know what the criteria are, if that's a recommendation to council. But council, at least, is politically motivated and has elections, and that's the idea on this stuff, is they are then representative to the people who can then vote them out. So what it feels like is we're going around.
I mean, it goes up and beyond, right, to where it's not local. So, and it would still have to be on the criteria, and partitions are not very deep applications.
No, as I said, I think three meetings ago, it is the school board that muffed us. They didn't do it right. But I can't seem to get on the school board.
Keep trying, Darby.
I don't know. I think my wife took my seat. I don't think I'm ever gonna get it.
I think you have representation now. You got an ear.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. Thank you.
And so this is a type-three procedure, quasi-digital, so we can't talk about it with anybody?
Absolutely. And please, please, if you do talk about it, make notes. Let them know that they need to have those conversations before the full body to submit comments in writing or come to present to you. And if you do have conversations that you can't avoid, take notes of them, so that you can present them as part of your expertise. Because we want to be very clear that this could get appealed, and so we want to at least do our process as cleanly as possible. And if anybody wants to come in and look at the full application in larger format, we're happy to make that available for you.
What was the lot coverage on this project?
It is, I've got staff report here.
Sorry, I guess I missed that piece.
It's up towards the top on the development standards. Lot coverage maximum in the R2 zone is 60%. The applicant has proposed 11 buildings with 16 carports, totaling 40,055 square feet, for a total of 27% lot coverage.
Wow. Just trying to see what those things look like as they're coming through. And yeah, thanks.
So do we know anything? I mean, there's a pool and a clubhouse and they're small, so they're not really designed for a family to live in. Are they, do we know if they're going to be affordable at all? Since that's kind of our goal as well?
Let's see. I don't know if I have the rents here, but let's see. I don't have a proposed rental amount.
And, and I think the actual original plan for this was to have that middle and even upper middle housing, because we don't have any good rental stock. For people with decent jobs was really the last development. And I think this lots, that's where they've always envisioned it going.
I would call it market rate housing.
Sure, market, that's a good term.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not affordable often is.
It's not affordable.
Affordable, affordable housing is actually a, an official term. But you could typically capitalize or actually put in air quotes, um, because it actually has a formal definition. And, um, that is thirty percent of AMI, and that's very specific. This is not that, because that is typically actually rent controlled effectively.
Yeah, it's discounted housing.
Yeah. And affordable housing to make it that, that qualification normally has some kind of external support that is actually, um, paying for it. So the applicant, the proper, the tenant is not actually supporting their fair share of that cost, or somebody else is bearing that burden.
Is the church's, um, plans, are they closed down at this point?
Uh, I think the window for their conditional use may have actually finally expired, so they would have to start over.
Any other questions? All right, well, I guess that wraps up our work session.
Are we doing that other lot? Yeah, we got one more.
Yeah, we have one more. Yeah. Okay, so, um, I'm going to share my screen real fast. That's okay. Just because this one's a little easier to see. Um, so can everybody see the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because my camera's not working for some reason. So you can see the screen, which is good. Okay. Um, so what we're looking at right now is kind of an extension of some of the work that we've been doing along the, um, what I'm going to call the swing of Gateway. Between the, um, fast food alley portion and Buy Mart. Um, over the last couple of years, we've been piecemealing, um, changing the zoning in this area. To recognize in many cases that, um, its existing commercial tourist designation. Isn't possible based on the road configuration. Because commercial tourist is really designed for high traffic uses, hotels, gas stations, fast food. And the curve of that road has eliminated that potential really for that type of work. And so the, these properties have either stayed vacant or stayed as what they had been historically, which was residential. And as they've, um, these properties, which many of the homes were built in the fifties and sixties. Have been turning over as families, that family members die or various other reasons. Um, the new property owners are all coming to the realization that the commercial tourist designation that was applied in the seventies. Does them absolutely no, um, good if they want to maintain their house. Because it actually, um, isn't under commercial tourist, you can't have a single family home. So which means that if your house is destroyed through any kind of act of God or either or whatever for more than sixty percent, you can't replace it. So you can't get, um, a refinance or a new mortgage on most of these properties. So the, um, similarly to other indic, um, properties that we've had the same conversation on. The property owner at nineteen forty-five Harvey, which is right at the corner of Harvey and, um, Gateway. Has come to the city saying, hi, I can't refinance my house because of the zoning and I'd like to keep my house. Um, he would like, they would like to change their zoning to match the zoning that we actually just applied. To the lower portion of Gateway Loop for the new commercial, for the new apartment complex to residential commercial. Because they can see a time at which this corner, which is decently placed with access between Harvey and Gateway. Um, might actually convert to a lower scale commercial. Um, but, so they want to go to residential commercial. So this is an application that has been made by Jason Fuller, who is the new property owner, following his father's passing of the house at nineteen forty-five Harvey. And, um, so the house is located on tax lot three oh one, which is the smaller rectangle. They also own that large triangle that is almost entirely Gateway and then the hill slope going up to I five. Um, so, but part of their yard is in that parcel. Um, and their driveway curiously is actually the right of way to North nineteenth. So in the future, we will see some work that the city will, um, entertain to. Probably vacate North nineteenth so that their driveway becomes actually private property and. Where, and dedicate the right of way to Gateway so that the, the right of way of Gateway becomes a right of way. Um, and so we'll, we'll see some property shifts in the future. Once we have the, the staff capacity to do that survey work, but right now we're just trying to fix the zoning. So.
Good. It does, you've got two lots there that don't have colors.
So the right of way that scoops between those two lots. Um, right of way just gets whatever is adjacent zoning. So I'm not coloring it.
Low and left. You've got yellow, you've got the orange, you've got the dark orange, that right there. Yep.
Oh, those two?
Yeah.
That's because I didn't color them. They're commercial tourist. I didn't color in the commercial tourist zone.
Are they part of the application?
They are not.
So we're going to have to revisit this when they want to do it?
Yes. I, at one point offered all of these properties to do it as one fail swoop and, um, about three of them took me up on the offer. As a matter of fact, post, Mr. Fuller, um, senior actually turned me down. Um, his son is now taking us up on the offer, unfortunately. Um, the property owners of five hundred and that are below this, those two property owners turned us down as well. So we've offered, I tried to do it, um, and consolidate these offers. They don't want to do it right now. Can't really make them.
Yeah, I hear you.
So. Yeah.
The yellow is just residential?
It's R1.
R1.
Correct. Which is why the RC is a better than going to, um, it's a nice transition zone actually between residential and commercial. And he plans to keep the house. So.
Until he subdivides the lot and, you know, develops the high rise right next to it, right?
It's actually a pretty nice house. This house is actually in really good shape. For nineteen fifties, it's fairly high style.
Nice. I have no questions. I'm good.
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay, and this will be a recommendation to council. Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
So ends our work session.
All right, thank you.
Um, hey, Chloe, one of the things that I am going to add to the planning commission agenda. Um, so we'll, we will have to make a motion to amend the agenda. Um, is a request to the planning commission to appoint a representative to my advisory committee for the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Oh, boy.
It's very exciting. Um, we finally have a scope of work out of ODOT. And so we have some hope of getting a contractor within the next two months. So I would like to get a representative appointed. It's for about four meetings stretched out over about eighteen months. So it's not a huge burden, but. Um, for me, it's a kind of an important project, so I'm excited.
Yeah. Do you have somebody in mind?
Nope. I'll let you all decide.
So any, uh, any, uh, what are we? I forget what we're called. Oh, commissioners who are interested in, uh, bicycles and what was the other part of that, Angela?
Pedestrians.
Wrong night.
It's an A name. It's all good. Um, yeah. It's a, yes, bicycles and pedestrians. So this is our sidewalk system and our bicycle system.
Oh, yeah, that, that's me. I'm all about it. It sucks. We got to make it better.
All right, excellent.
You guys could appoint me too. I don't care. I use, I walk, I ride my bike.
And we can have multiples. So we can't have more than three because that would be a quorum.
Take them both. Oh, so, and that's something we all should be aware of, that we shouldn't have more than three of us in a group, not that any of us hang out together. But, uh, I think Blake and Ashley.
I definitely want to hang out with all of you guys in my free time.
I would hang out with you, Ashley, whatever.
I mean, I know you guys want to hang out with me because I'm super cool, but.
We can have a meeting out at the farm with my alpacas one time if you want.
I want to see the.
We'll record it. We can record it.